Good evening, West Orange, and welcome to our September 29 Council Conference Agenda. Madam Currits, would you kindly please read the opening statement?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger in the West Orange Chronicle on December 1, 2014. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, West Orange, and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on December 1, 2014. Councilman Cirillo.
Present.
Councilman Kukoviac.
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney.
Present.
Council President Guarino.
Present.
Mayor Parisi.
Evening, everyone. The first order of business tonight is to welcome and swear in a new member of our family, and I'd like to call up Councilwoman Select Michelle Castellino and our honored guest Assemblyman John McKeon to swear her into the oath of office. And just a note of offer, we have Michelle's family, our husband and her daughter here tonight, to share this experience with us tonight. I can't tell you how thrilled I am to have the honor of swearing with Michelle. We, your son and I, Anthony, who isn't here, share the same college, Muleburg College. Henry Muleburg, in history, was a preacher, and during the Revolutionary War, he has preacher robes on, and he said, "There's a time for words, but then there's a time for action." And he took off his robes and had military uniform on to be good. That reminds me of you, because from the time, whether it was as a Girl Scout leader, you know, working for the PTA and all of that volunteer work, then looking just like Armee or Rob Parisi at Eagle Rock Civic Association, saying, "I grew up here, we're going to make this a better place," you took off the robe and you fought. And you've been an incredible member of this community. What you've done, all of our children in our community through the service of the Board of Education, has been amazing, and what your terrific husband does for the PAL, our own children have contributed to our community. We're really lucky to have a West Orange family taking another step to have you now take your role as Councilwoman. So, thank you for this honor, I'm very proud of it.
Thank you.
Last chance to say no.
Don't go to that.
Could you please place your hand on the Bible and raise your hand and repeat after me? I, Michelle Castellino.
I, Michelle Castellino.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of people.
Under the authority of people.
I can further solemnly swear.
I can further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of the Office of Councilwoman.
Of all the duties of Office of Councilwoman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Councilwoman, please take your seat with us. Thank you, Anthony, thank you, everybody. Thank you to Castellino family for being with us tonight. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay.
Excuse me, someone's trying to get inside, they can't get in. They're trying to get in their wheelchair, the doors seem to lock.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Now to the rest of our agenda. Welcome, Michelle.
Thank you, welcome.
Okay, next on our agenda is our, oh, I'm sorry, our Downtown Alliance Executive Director would like to make some presentations to you.
I actually thought that we would get Michelle all caught up, so I brought some stuff.
All right, Meg.
I have the property tax card for you to sign up with tonight. I have four magnets, one for the valley part of downtown, one for St. Mark's part of downtown, Torrey Corner, and Eagle Rock, which I know, you know very well. I have our 1910's Girl Cage Lightbulb, which you can proudly display. I have our couple of Shop West Orange flyers that are handy. I have our new restaurant guide for you as well. I have a pen, which is a fabulous pen, that says Downtown Alliance. I have a reflector, so when you're running downtown.
Uh-oh.
You will be seen.
You've got a lot of faith in me.
I have a couple of magnets, West Orange Cowboy colored magnets for you. Chapstick.
Not a Ram?
Not a Ram, nope. I should have given you a black one, there you go. I also have a Mayor's 5K Run tee-shirt for you, and I have one for the family. These were extras, sorry. For you guys, Mayor's 5K Run. And, I know, really want this, because I know what a sweatshirt girl you are.
Yes.
West Orange, the brand-new Downtown Alliance Sweatshirt, which go for $25. You get your spray. We just want to say welcome, and now you're caught up. Everybody received a lot of this stuff over the past year, I wanted you to have everything that everybody else had.
Thank you.
So, welcome.
Thank you, Megan, and it's going to be a pleasure to work with you once again.
Councilwoman, I'd just like to know, would you like to say a few words?
Absolutely, I would. First of all, I can't thank, can you hear me? I can't thank the council enough for selecting me. I appreciate it wholeheartedly. We've all worked together for so many years, each and every one of you, and it's a pleasure to work with you as a colleague now, in true fashion, so thank you very much for being this election. And thank you also to the candidates that were here the other evening. They were very impressive individuals, and I hope they stay active in the community, and it was a pleasure to, I knew one of them, but it was a pleasure to really get to know a little bit more about the rest of them. So, that was nice to see them come forward, and that you selected them as well, it was an honor to be in their presence. And thank you to the staff, Mr. Gross and Karen, and Mr. Sayers have been helping me along the past 24 hours to get caught up to speed for tonight's meeting, so hopefully I will be prepared. And to John McKeon, Assemblyman McKeon, for coming down, we've been friends for many years, and it meant a lot for me that you were available this evening to swear me in. So, it's been a long time that I've known you, and it really meant a lot, and to my family for you to be here. Mayor Parisi, again, working with you on this level will be a treat. We've done so many things together in the past decade or so, and sitting right next to you, a gentleman that brought me all into this, John O'Connor, a longtime friend who is like a dad to me, and Mr. O'Connor, I'm very pleased, and I hope I'm making you proud by sitting here this evening. I also like to thank my colleagues from the school board. I see Laura Lav and Sandra Mordecai here to support me, they've been very supportive with the decision to put my, to put my name in the hat last week. And it wasn't an easy choice for me to do, to have to leave the Board of Ed race, and to actually leave the school board, my heart will always be with the school district, and it will be nice to be able to work in this capacity, helping out the school district of West Orange. And to all the supporters and all the teachers and staff that I worked with through the years, I'll surely miss them. And lastly, but most importantly, my beautiful family, God bless them, it's, I gave 10 years to the school board, and each and every one of them actually pushed me to come step up to the next level with the town, for this level, I should say, not the next level, with the town council. And it was many hours being out of the house for the school board, my husband is a very good cook now, and I can't thank all of you enough. Thank you for having me.
Thanks. Next up, I would like to call the West Orange Arts Council to make a presentation. Good evening, ladies.
We're here this evening representing the West Orange Arts Council, and my name is Carol Lemon, I'm the Chair of the Arts Council.
I'm Heidi Sessman.
And I'm Amelia Panico.
And we are thrilled to announce that the West Orange Arts Council and the town of West Orange will be opening its doors to the Arts Center located on Valley Road, and we are thrilled to bring this to our community, but it couldn't be made possible without the help and support of our mayor, Robert Parisi, and Jack Sayers, and the rest of the town council. We thank you so much for supporting us, for listening to us, and helping to see our dream come to fruition, and we are thrilled to open our doors. Our launch will be on October 10th and 11th. From 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., we'll have workshop demonstrations. It's free to the public. We will get to show off our wonderful gallery, and then Saturday evening, October 10th, from 7:00 to 9:00, we will have a wonderful launch party. There will be food, that is being donated by a lot of our businesses, and that's donating wonderful food for us, and what else do we have going on?
We have music.
Oh, yes, yes, thank you. Local artist and guitarist Adam Gustafson will be performing, and it's going to be a great event, and we're just thrilled to finally open our doors and have this wonderful arts center as part of the community. So, thank you to the town council.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Just wanted to say thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
We thank you for the hard work and diligence you put into this, and we wish you much success, and we are here for you, and congratulations, and continued good luck and success.
Thank you so much, Megan.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Council President, I just want to expound on what they just said. For the West Orange Arts Council, a membership to the council, this is what it includes. It includes a 10% discount at Jerry's Artist Outlet Store at Essex Green. It includes 25% discount at the annual Classic Film Festival that runs January through March, discounted workshops, enrollment in artist registry, and annual membership exhibits. Visit the website, W-O-A, W-O-Aarts, at dot, I'm sorry, W-O-Aarts.org. West Orange Arts Council.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Up next, we'll have Ms. Megan Brill come up again and give us the Downtown Alliance. Good to see you again.
Thank you, thank you, Jerry, I'm sorry, Council President. I wanted to remind everyone that Joe Fagan taped a episode of Drive By History, which will air on PBS on October 7th at 8 o'clock. It should be an excellent episode, it's one of eight series that got picked up by PBS, which Orange is one of the eight historic sites that are featured. So, that's a pretty big plug for all things downtown. We also have a grand opening for the music, it's Vienna the Music School. It's in the old Vals Harrison Building. So, Vals was there for 51 years. The building was vacant for about six months, and now this new music school is going in there. They're a lovely couple from town, so we're going to do a ribbon cutting with the mayor at 1:00 on Saturday afternoon down in the Torrey Corner section. Okay, 5K run is finally over. We were able to have record numbers of visitors downtown, over 1,000 people registered and ran and walked. We had record number of volunteers that came and helped us. There were easily 50 people that were here sponsoring, moving tables, helping us do whatever needed to get done, in this really short window of time. It's actually the best volunteer gig you can do, because it's 8:00 in the morning and you're done by 11:00, and then you're gone. So, we had a record fundraising as well. The day of the run, we had $103,000 in the bank. Since then, we're up to $115,000, which is amazing. I really attribute that not so much to me and the Downtown Alliance, but to the NOCC ladies, the NOCC, as they prefer to be called now, our wonderful group of ladies. I learned so much about this form of cancer and this kind of disease, and how really terrible it is, and how when you get diagnosed because there's no test, you're in stage three or four, and the death rate is huge at that level. So, the money that we were able to raise in our weekend here in town will truly help fund a test for this cancer. So, I also want to thank, public work was amazing that day. West Orange Board of Education loaned us tables and chairs, which was wonderful that we didn't have to rent them. I want to thank Shari Beth, a resident and survivor of ovarian cancer, Shari Beth Sescan. Shari Beth is a survivor, and she's a top fundraiser, every year in a row, like 10 years running, she has raised the most money. We also had record number of teams represented. The Teams banner is here, I left it up here. It's really big, but I wanted you to see the Teams, but for time's sake, you can go on the website and see all the teams that were represented. We had 42 teams actually represent, and over 55 teams show up on the day of the run to support loved ones, survivors, and members of their family that truly mean something for them. What I think was really important to me, when I was standing in the middle of the, you know, Main Street, trying to, you know, make sure everybody was going in the right, doing the right thing, what I saw was families being able to rally around people, and it was truly an amazing day. And for West Orange to be able to be the only run in this area that supports, you know, that group, is truly something special about what we do. So, we will continue to do it, we'll continue to raise a lot of money doing it, and we really couldn't have done it without the support of all of you and folks downtown. It's hard to not be able to drive on Main Street for five hours. So, we thankful to all the residents to make sure that everyone knows that it was a really important thing that we did on Sunday, and it was a really good cause. So, I think that's it, unless you have any questions about anything.
First of all, congratulations, Megan, to a great effort, and all the volunteers and all of the people that turned out to make it another successful 5K for a very, very, you know, worthy cause, and I congratulate you and the force of Downtown Alliance, so.
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Brill, or? No?
Job well done.
Congratulations.
Okay, moving right along, we have three council liaisons on positions to fill for the remainder of 2014-2015 term. We have local assistance board, we have the John P. Renna House, and we have the West Orange Municipal Alliance Committee. I'd like to open, I'm saying for, if I start myself, I would like to be considered for the Renna House.
Do we nominate?
I would not, sure. I need a nomination in a second.
I would, I enjoyed serving on the Renna House, and if you haven't had a turn, then I would nominate you to serve on the Renna House.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Guarino?
Thank you to my colleagues, and thank you, so I'll look you for you, Councilwoman McCartney, for advice.
Great, good. I would like to make a recommendation, I think Michelle to get her feet wet, to nominate you for the West Orange Municipal Alliance. A lot of the programs that you have to review and evaluate are youth programs, I think that goes hand in hand with work that you have done, and I know will continue to do. It's really grants, a lot of grants, and deciding the worst, the best one, most worthy at that time. So, I would make a nomination for you to serve on the Municipal Alliance Committee.
I second that.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Thank you, yes, I'll be happy to serve.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Guarino?
Yes. The last position to fill is the local assistance board. Any of my colleagues would like to take on that duty?
No. Is their obligation?
Is that the rent levelling board? What they do is they assess the?
No, it's not the rent levelling board.
No, it's local assistance.
This is the local assistance board, this is the welfare board.
Oh, that's the program.
It's administered by Patty, who also does the Alliance, so that might.
Patty Duffy.
Patty Duffy. Are these all her responsibilities?
These are Patty's responsibilities, but Patty Duffy, who is our welfare director, works with the local assistance board as well as the municipal Alliance.
Yeah, I'm fine. If, did you want us?
Patty Duffy is also the coordinator for the municipal Alliance, so.
That's fine.
Yep.
All right, so.
Do I have a second? Oh, we have a nomination, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I nominate Michelle for the local assistance board.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Thank you, I think, yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Guarino?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Thank you very much. Moving right along, we have council liaison announcements, Councilwoman McCartney.
Well, you know, we have the muckers board, one of the things that, from Downtown Alliance Partnership, and the Chamber of Commerce, we have the Thomas Edison National Historic Park Second Annual Muckers Ball this Saturday on October 3rd. Members of the National Historic Park, tickets are $45, $55 if you're a non-member, but you can go online, the Friends of Thomas Edison are the sponsoring agent for this event. It's really a fun night, we talked about the word muckers. Muckers is a term that Thomas Edison used for, on his researches, when he expected them to work on inventions through the night, and he would bring in food from local restaurants, he would provide food for his muckers from local restaurants. The same will be true on Saturday, we have food coming in from La Bredy's, the Essex House, and desserts by the manor. We have a cake donated by Supreme Bakery, and many of the friends on the board for the Historic Park are providing food as well. And a beer garden, and a beer garden. So, that's this Saturday, October 3rd, from 5:30 to 9:30. The very next day, on October 4th, we have our first annual West Orange Community Health and Wellness Fair. This is an event between the West Orange Chamber and the Public Relations Commission. We have over 65 exhibitors at Liberty Middle School, expected at Liberty Middle School, they're already registered, Sunday between 1:00 and 4:00. This event is free, and I'm working with the Health Department to provide transportation for the seniors from our senior homes, so we're hoping that all of that falls into place. Just to give you an idea of some of the exhibitors we have, the fire department has a mobile safety house that will be outside, so many safety features in it. The West Orange Environmental Commission will be kicking off the Leader of Light. I'm sorry that Superintendent Retske just left, and I really, the Board of Ed approved a curriculum integration of Leader of Light with the Sustainable Technology and Engineering Design Courses at the high school, and this really is technology that the students already do, but now will have a global impact, because by partnering with Leader of Light, which is a charitable organization that provides solar-powered light, streetlights, for countries that have been devastated by storm, our students will now be creating those circuits and partnering with Leader of Light to provide those streetlights. So, I wanted to thank the superintendent for that. So, there will be a kickoff and more information from Leader of Light at the fair, New Jersey Arts Incubator. The Lions Club will have a mobile eye care unit there for free screenings. The National Historic Park, I just mentioned the Edison National Historic Park, they have a national campaign for healthy parks equal healthy people, that will be featured here. Stop for Nikhil. The police have the program about not texting and distracted driving, I'm doing this to remind you. The CERT team will be there recruiting new members for the Community Emergency Response Team, New Jersey American Water, and I guess in center stage, I want to say, in the gym at Liberty Middle School, will be St. Barnabas Medical Center. They've reserved four tables for a whole host of activities, interactive activities for individuals, children and adults of all ages. And I have to mention the Overlook Medical Center, because they are bringing an inflatable brain tunnel, which sounds just that.
Interesting.
Right, that perennial student in me is just curious to see what an inflatable brain tunnel looks like. A lot of interactive devices, I understand, will be inside the brain. So, this is Sunday, free admission, 1:00 to 4:00, Liberty Middle School. Everyone's invited.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'd like to spring up, I know Ms. Brill made our Downtown Alliance announcement, so that took care of that, but also on Saturday evening at 7:30 at Cody Arena, we have the West Orange All-Stars, the fire department facing off with another team, who's the other team on the, with the mayor, and the mayor's team facing off, and a lot of fathers and dads whose children are in the hockey program, we have the mountaintop fundraiser at the Cody Arena at 7:30, $10. It's a great fundraiser for our new feeder program for our hockey teams, and I think everybody have a good time. Last year, the mayor's team won, so let's see if Mayor Parisi can bring it through again. So, it'll be an exciting, and that's at 7:30 at Cody Arena at Turtleback Zoo, and also, of course, like Councilwoman McCartney said about the muckers ball and the health fair, so, Councilman Cirillo?
Sure, it's a busy Saturday, so much to do all day. Yeah, I encourage residents to come out on Saturday and check all these activities, especially that mountaintop league hockey game, that was exciting last year, should be exciting again. Still taking some donations, if anybody is interested in making a donation, as you know, that our recreational leagues really are dependent upon a lot of financial support, either from the participating parents, members of the community, businesses. I do have to commend Alex Durand, who's been very active. Yesterday, for example, she went to like six to seven businesses soliciting donations, so it's people like that in our community that are very important to help us generate the kind of finances that we need to keep the leagues going. Hockey has taken off, and we are 100% behind it, as you mentioned, trying to develop a feeder program for the high school. In addition to that, in regards to our council liaison reports, Council President, I received an email this afternoon from Debbie Solonardi, the window project is done, so we've changed every window at the Degnan House, we have brand-new windows, it'll help mitigate issues that we had with water penetration, and it cost around a quarter of a million dollars, but it was bid, and we got a good price, and it was completed on time, so we're very happy with that. Chairman Frank K. Bronn was very active, Matt Scola, Terry Cunningham, in helping us moving that through, so.
Congratulations.
Yeah, it was really cool, it was really cool to see that, and of course, at the end of the day, it's our seniors that benefit from that, so that was exciting. I do see Deputy Mayor Rodriguez, he'll talk a little bit about some of the activity that we've been working on with the Hispanic Foundation, and Laura Lav, she's been so helpful in our endeavors, so it's nice to see her in the crowd as well, so I'll. So I'll yield the floor to him later on during public comment to address some of those initiatives. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations on a successful project.
Thank you.
Councilman Kukoviac?
No announcements, thank you.
Next meeting, Councilwoman, would you like to make any comments about...
Well, I'd just like to thank the Mountain Top League for all their hard work with the hockey program, because the high school has definitely, is going to be a beneficiary to all of their efforts. So I'd just like to thank them. They really, they really, you know, when you get into the high school sports and whatnot, it's what happens at the rec levels that brings the students up to the high school. So they've done an excellent job, and we're going to see their hard work in the next year or two. So thank you to them.
Congratulations. The Mountain Top League has done a tremendous effort for our feeder programs, for our soccer team, for our hockey team now, and going into other sports. But it's one or the other, just like PAL. They are great partners with our educational system and in our sports, and they've done great contributions. So we should be very thankful for both our PAL and Mountain Top League organizations and those moms and dads. Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, moving right along.
Before we start, Council President, I would like to ask for a moment of silence just for Nick Solis, our recycling coordinator's father, just passed away. The wake was this evening.
It's a very well thought, Councilwoman. We'll now have a moment of silence for Mr. Solis's father. Thank you. We'll go now into our public meeting.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on December 1st, 2014. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building West Orange and filed in the office of the municipal clerk of the township of West Orange on December 1st, 2014. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Guarino?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I now would like to open the floor to public comment. Is there anyone from the general public who would like to address the Township Council? Yes, ma'am. No, please come up to the podium and please speak into the microphone and give us your name and address.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for your volunteerism to the township. My name is Sharon Rouse Feinsad. I'm a resident with my husband at 516 Smith Manor Boulevard, also known as 10 Smith Manor Boulevard, Unit 516. We're great supporters of the township. We moved here after our children moved out, and I'm retired. My husband is still actively employed. We love West Orange. We love everything that you offer. You offer great senior services, and I see that some of the people in my building using them. You have a wonderful school district. You have a great fire department, police department. The municipal services are terrific. I don't like coming here to talk about this, but it has really, it's not a reflection on you, but it's what you can do, and I'm going to present you with a challenge. Unfortunately, PALS left. It was time for them to go. We inherited a CVS like every other corner in America. At least it's clean, it's well-lit, it's appropriate-looking. There are some issues that deal with the intersection and part of Eagle Rock Avenue from Prospect Street and down the hill. And I'm going to go through them sequentially. First of all, the gas station, the Exxon station on the corner of Eagle Rock and Prospect Street is deplorable. I went there today in the rain and took photographs, which I will give you copies of. The side on Prospect Street has a very messy collection of used cars that go to the back. Unfortunately, when Exxon, or however the deal went, removed the pumps on Eagle Rock, it made for a worse situation. And we now have a lineup of very beat-up used cars. I don't know what the zoning rules, laws are. I don't know what the planning board and how that works. But I would request that you go over there. On the corner, they put in a somewhat enhanced, for a triangle, of new shrubbery when it was first built. And then the rest of the property decayed. In addition to these beat-up cars along the edge, there are micro-minuscule bushes, little tiny things, that go in front of a couple of the cars, but they do, they do not act in any way as a camouflage. So all you see is this beat-up car lot. In addition, there is a dumpster there. I have pictures of it. It's been like this for several days. Obviously, the person who owns or manages the property doesn't want to pay bigger carting fees, and so the good people of West Orange, these are the car photos for your benefit. I couldn't go onto Eagle Rock. I would have been dead and wouldn't have made it to the meeting, but that's, you know, you'll get the gist. This is the photo right in front of Eagle Rock Avenue. That's disgusting, and that's not from last night. This is going on since Sunday or Saturday, because they definitely don't pick up on Sunday. They didn't pick up yesterday. It's their responsibility to police it in case somebody is doing illegal dumping. Otherwise, it's their responsibility to pick up the dough and pay for another carting fee. We had renovations this year. We had to pay $1,000 for a carting fee for a two-bedroom condo. They also have, which I do support, these clothing boxes from the Salvation Army and Planet, Planet Aid, which I support. I put old clothes in there, beautiful old clothes in there all the time. However, I don't think we're responsible for old rusted boxes that are nothing but an eyesore, right on the same property, right by the banged-up cars, the used cars. I don't know how it became a car lot, and so that's an issue. Then there is, oh, this is another side. This is the backside of the car lot. These are the minuscule shrubs they will tell you that they put in. I also have some pictures on my phone that I didn't have time to print out that I'll be happy to send to you.
Your time is up?
Yes.
Your time is up. Your time ran out.
Very quickly? My first and only? Okay, that's problem number one. That's got to be addressed. The next problem is there's one of these terrible boxes with cones going into the bowling alley. Now, the sign to the bowling alley is decayed and decrepit, and on one side it says "Bong." We want to advertise bongs in West Orange. It has B-O, blank, 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 and G. And it's decayed, and I have those pictures for you. So I think the owner, I think you have the people skills to be able to work something with that. Then we have this terrific, beautiful office building, and then the diner. I went to the diner that the man who bought the property owns up in Hackensack. I think it can be a real out-of-the-park home run for the township. I realize you have issues that you have to resolve with the planning board. I know nothing about those things. I leave that to you, but I think it could be a real home run, and I think it will bring people from lots of other towns to eat here, as well as address the issue of jobs and unemployment. And it's a great thing to do. But I would like to see you step up to the plate and force these people to clean up their property. We don't need urban blight, and I think you can do it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
First of all, I would like to congratulate Michelle, our new councilwoman. Laura was here to congratulate, but she had to leave, so she makes sure, make sure I tell you that she was here for you. First of all, we want to thank the Health Department in West Orange for the support on a health fair that we had beginning of the month. It was a lot of help, and we want to say thank you to Theresa and the health officers present. We definitely will be there, Susan, next month. But basically, I'm here to announce that this weekend, Friday night, we have a foundation meeting, 8 o'clock, same place, Trinity Church, at 315 Main Street. We already have, well, we welcome even our town council president is a member now, Jerry Guarino. So everybody's welcome. Cirillo is one of our right-handers, Councilman Cirillo. So everybody's welcome to come and support. We have a lot of good stuff going on with the Hispanic Foundation, and we want to make sure that the whole town is aware of all the little things that we have been doing. Basically, we have been uniting, putting, getting the community together, like especially, I know everyone knows that the Hispanic Foundation, I mean, the Hispanic population in America, we are like 21 countries that speak Spanish, and I think West Orange has them all, because I see people from every country here in West Orange. I really do. Before I forget, I do want to thank OSPOC, and I see Susan here, and everybody at OSPOC for all the support this summer, for all the activities we had for the Hispanic Foundation, and all the support that Susan and OSPOC and everybody there gave our foundation. It was really amazing, a couple of parties that we had. The first one, the Hispanic Night, the Latin Night, that was great, and the inauguration of our foundation. It was really great. So everyone is invited, is welcome, this Friday night at 8 o'clock. We have a lot of things going on, so please come and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Town Council. My name is Darius Scalotti, and I live at 58 Mountain Avenue, West Orange. I want to, first thing is, I want to thank the council president that was here, the girl, she's the council president. I don't recall her name, but I gave her a letter that I sent to CVS Pharmacy, and she said, "Thank you for the letter," that I gave to her. It was a copy of the letter I sent to them. I never had her, so I want to say thank you to her for that. I never received a response from CVS Pharmacy, and I don't know if they received the letter or what happened, but that's the way it is at the moment. So after that, there is, there are some towns that offer, the residents of those towns, individual residents, jobs, they give those residents a couple of hours a week, a couple of hours, I'm going to say during the month, they give those residents a couple of hours during the month, and they can work with those hours that they're given, any way they want to, to pick up trash along the street, or, that's what it is, pick up trash along the street, put the trash in the trash can at the corner, and they're paid for that service. But West Orange, I understand, West Orange doesn't have a program to do that. So I did give an application to Mr. Parisi at the Clean Communities Program at Lakeside Avenue, so that he knows, you know, that was what my interest is. So he said he's going to keep it on file. He said that he's going to keep it on file. The program shows up, and my application is on file. So that's it. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parisi.
Have a good Halloween.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Bob Hodson, and I live at 10 Gaston Street. I am here tonight to register my disappointment with the recent process to fill the open council seat of former councilwoman Patty Spengel. Are you aware, councilmembers, that as a candidate for the open seat on the West Orange Township Council, I have yet to be informed that I will or will not be called in for an interview? I did not receive one communication regarding the selection and/or elimination process after following what I thought was the proper and uniform procedure for applying. I did receive an email from Councilman Kukoviac yesterday evening, September 28th, well after the selection of the new council member, and one email from Councilwoman McCartney this past Sunday, September 27th, also well after the selection process, inviting me as a council candidate to get involved in township organizations. I found out about the special council meeting and the selection of Michelle Castellino as I took an Amtrak train from Philadelphia to Metro Park on Saturday, September 26th, and I read an article on my cellphone about it. I was surprised to read that the council had selected September 24th to hold a special meeting, that the council had decided to invite a limited number of candidates to be interviewed, and that the select candidates list was made known to the township through the special council meeting, but not to the candidates, as far as I know. I still do not know the names of the candidates for the open council seat. As a person with a doctoral degree in administration with a heavy concentration on organizational theory and application, I believe that the process is as always important as the product. I'm not here to question your right to appoint Michelle Castellino to the council or to question Ms. Castellino's qualifications for the seat, for it was made clear by Attorney Trink in a recent council meeting that you had significant leeway in deciding a process to fill the seat. I am here to question certain aspects of the process you chose to use and to tell you that the process left this candidate disenfranchised from that process. My purpose is to help the council and the township to avoid such a flawed process in the future. As you know, Pope Francis was in three major U.S. cities this past week, and because of my work, I was on duty and on call in all three cities, from September 22nd, when he landed in Washington, to wheels up on Sunday night in Philadelphia. And knowing that I was going to be in and out of town for the papal visit, but also for the possibility that I would be called in for an interview for the position of town council member, based on my resume, my candidacy in the last election in which a sizable number of residents voted for me, and on the information contained in the process, such as the dates for interviews, September 24th and maybe September 28th, I made the decision not to stay overnight in hotels in Washington and Philadelphia because it was my understanding that I could be called in for an interview as late as September 28th, yesterday. On September 20th, after not hearing from anyone since my September 15th paperwork submission to the clerk's office, and knowing that I would be swamped with work from September 22nd to 27th, I wrote to the four sitting council members via email and elicited the reasons why I thought I should be considered as an acceptable candidate. I heard from none of the four. Not even a "thanks for your email, Bob." I found it odd, but then I said to myself, perhaps the process doesn't allow the council members to connect with candidates during the process. I've found out since that that was not the case. In Councilman Kukoviac's email of September 28th, he seemed to indicate that others who applied for the position of councilperson also may have experienced frustrations with the process, as I did. He mentioned that he... He mentioned that he had interviewed as many as half of the 17 candidates, another number which I was not aware of. What was that all about? And were those interviews held in accordance with the process decided upon by the council and in accordance with the New Jersey election law? And if most of the candidates for the open seat were interviewed by either Councilman Krokowiac or the four sitting council members individually or as a council, why were not all the candidates interviewed?
Your time is up.
May I have 30 seconds to finish?
Sure.
Since I was interviewed by no one, were the other 16 candidates interviewed officially or unofficially by which councilmembers, officially or unofficially? During previous council meetings, it was revealed that prospective candidates were campaigning for their selection through Facebook pages, phone calls, emails, and perhaps other means of technology. And since one or more councilmembers were seemingly involved in various acts of unofficial or official communication from the time Councilwoman Spango resigned, could those communications be considered official? Or was nothing, quote, "official" until the clerk received all of our applications? Perhaps the collective frustrations and flaws experienced by some of the other candidates and myself during the recent process will help to shape a better policy next time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Puglisi?
Hello. First, let me congratulate Michelle Castellino on her appointment. Second, let me apologize for the way I'm dressed. We had our annual Senior Wellness Day at Cody Arena today. We welcome close to 3,000 seniors, and I didn't have a chance to get home and change before coming here. So at least I have a county seal on my shirt, so. West Orange is always a busy place, and the county is also always a busy place. I just want to share some upcoming events, and again, all this information is on our website, which is EssexCountyNJ.org. October 3rd is our Household Hazers Waste Collection Day in Cedar Grove at 125 Fairview Avenue, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. October 17th, oh, sorry, I gave you the wrong timeline. Household Hazers Waste is 8:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., sorry. October 17th is Computer and Electronics Recycling at that same location, 125 Fairview Avenue. That event is 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. October 25th at the Presby Irish Gardens in Montclair, that's at 6:00 p.m. That's where we have worked with various high school students. They carve jack-o'-lanterns, and then we line the Irish Gardens with the lit jack-o'-lanterns. It's quite a sight, if you want to come out that night. October 26th is, we have two Strut Your Mutt parades, one at 9:00 a.m. in Brookdale Park and one at 1:00 p.m. in the South Mountain Reservation at the two dog parks that we have. That, again, is a great show of creativity, and it's a great event, even if you just come out and watch, you don't need a pet to come out and enjoy the morning or the afternoon. And then October 31st, which is Halloween, at Turtleback Zoo, we have our Safe Halloween. We'll have numerous candy stations. I'm sure all local dentists appreciate that, but that event is going to go from 4:00 to 8:00, and that's at Turtleback Zoo. Again, all this information is on the website, EssexCountyNJ.org.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Township Council? Seeing none, I close public comment, and I'd like to start tonight with the situation on Prospect and Eagle Rock Avenue. I think the administration won't handle that and look into it. Thank you, Mr. Sayers, and hopefully you'll report back to the council and give us an update, what's going on. Deputy Mayor Rodriguez and Hispanic Foundation, it's a great organization. They try to make efforts to speak English for me, but I totally didn't have to, because I do understand it, so I was very comfortable. But it's a fantastic group of people and a really, really interesting group who want to bring a real connection to the community, and I really wish them success, and I'll be working with them as much as I can. Thank you, Darius, for your comments about community. Mr. Hodson, the process that was set up and was set up with our meeting, our last public meeting, the dates were the 24th and the 25th, not the 28th.
24th and 28th.
28th, sorry, thank you. Tentatively, if we didn't have enough time, the 28th was another time, if we didn't have enough time to interview. Each councilperson was given the complete set of the 17 resumes that were sent in, and we were given up until Monday of the week of the 24th to select up to three. We were able to select none, select one, two, or three, submit them to the township clerk, and the township clerk notified those selected candidates that they would be interviewed at the meeting of the 24th. Not everybody was going to get interviewed. We were given the resumes, we were given time to review them, and if a councilperson wanted to reach out and talk to a candidate, they could. A lot of the candidates called us. A lot of candidates know how to reach us, and they called us, want to discuss, you want to discuss. As long as it's one-on-one, there's no conflict, because it's not a council meeting. There's not more than three people in the room. So there was nothing, any violation of the Election Laws or Open Public Meetings Act. If it was one-on-one, that's fine. Councilman Krokowiac spoke to a number of people, which is fine. He reached out to them. People reached out to me, I've reached out to a couple. But there was nothing about, you know, I'm sorry you were not selected, I'm sorry if you were and you were not in town because of your commitments and your very noble commitments, but that was a date because we had, by state statute, we had to have a candidate seated before this meeting. And if we waited past then, then we couldn't select the candidate, and neither one of two options is, the seat would be left open, or, correct me, the mayor would make the selection if we couldn't make it, right?
If it was a tie.
If it was a tie. If it was a tie, then the mayor would make the selection. Mr. Kayser, am I correct in what I've said so far? Have I missed anything?
I think you're correct. I wasn't listening as closely as I might have been, because Mr. Sayers was speaking to me, but I think you were basically correct. And going forward, if I have to answer any questions, I'm happy to do so. Although Mr. Trank predominantly did the mechanics of this.
Yes, Madam Clerk, would you please make comment?
And also, letters were sent out to the people that were not chosen. They were mailed out, so you will be getting, I mean, they were mailed out. That's all I can say.
That's all I, I mean, we believe the entire council selected the process, the entire council agreed it was a very well-put-together process. Members of the community felt it was a very open and fair process to do, to select a new council member, and I, we just feel everything, and if you were not selected, you know, it wasn't any, it was the four remaining members selected the people to be interviewed. It wasn't all 17. It just, whatever, we were given an option of one, two, or three, or none. Some of us picked one, some of us picked two or three, so. But we appreciate your comments, we do, and we like to be as open and fair as possible, and everybody, it's the democratic process. So that's all I have to say. And again, thank you to the county for all the services you offer, the Township of West Orange, and the great things you offer our seniors and our kids. It's a great thing. So thank you. Thank you to the county executive. Councilwoman Castellino, would you like to make any comments on what was said tonight?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I would like to thank everyone for coming down this evening. Mr. Gallotti, I like your idea of the Clean Communities Program. Oh, thank you. Of the Clean Communities Program. I too live right off of Eagle Rock Avenue, so I do see a need for the garbage pickup during different times of the year. Also, Ms. Fiesod, I have to agree with some of her comments this evening, because I pass by that area of town at least 100 times a day some days. Not so much now that my son's not at the high school anymore, he's in college, but always frequenting up and down Eagle Rock Avenue. And that's about it. Congratulations to Deputy Mayor Rodriguez. He's done outstanding job in organizing his new committee, and I hope to visit them shortly. Mr. Puglisi, thank you for your kind comments as well, and I've known you for a very long time and for all your information. And Mr. Hodson, I had the opportunity to meet you last year, so thank you for coming down to express your opinions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Krokowiac?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Just wanted to thank the first resident who spoke at public comment, and it looks like from some of the activity off-camera that the administration is responding very quickly to this, and I just wondered, perhaps at the next council meeting, if you could just give us an update, because there might be people out in the audience who want to know sort of what the happy ending is here. I appreciate it. Thank you to Mr. Rodriguez and to Mr. Gallotti for their thoughts. Dr. Hodson, I too was a little bit disappointed in the process, and particularly on the communication. I do want to just put it into context, we basically had 30 days to do this. It was not a lot of time, particularly given the fact that there were 17 candidates. It's also a process that is not done frequently at all in our community. I think the last time was maybe five years ago. So we don't have a standard process where we've worked out all the kinks. But to answer your question about me, we were assured at the previous council meeting by Mr. Trank that it was okay for us to talk to as many candidates as we wanted to, and as I said in my note to you, I tried to get as many people in as I could, because I thought even though we had the resumes and we had cover letters in most cases, and in the case, for example, you, I knew you from your previous campaign for council, I still tried to hit as many people as I could, because I just thought it was the least respect that I could offer to people who stepped up like you did and others, and also to just try to make a better, informed judgment. But I also agree that the process could have been handled a little bit better. I had sent a letter to, sent an email to the clerk and council president just about that very situation. When I was talking to people, some of the people were saying they hadn't been notified at all about this, and in fact, one person just sort of hung up on me when I was interviewing him, because he had just discovered that he wasn't on the list to be interviewed at the council, the special council meeting either. So I do agree that perhaps the next time, we could do a little bit better at the communication and the process, but I do have to say, you know, it was a, it's a very constrained process to try to find somebody, particularly when there were 17, there were 17 candidates. But I'm, if this situation comes up again, I'll try to be a little bit more involved in developing the process. And for whatever failings I gave you, I apologize. And Mr. Puglisi, again, thank you for your information.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Cirilo?
Thank you, Council President. I think what the issue here is, it has to do with communication. I think that the process that was laid out and that was put into effect was clearly followed. I just saw the announcement, I was just looking at the announcement, and I think the announcement is very clear, as far as what the expectations are, in terms of when those resumes were due, in terms of when that interviews or the interviews were going to take place, in terms of when the selection was going to be done by the town council. So the problem here is communication in regards to the applicants that submitted applications didn't, I guess, since they didn't hear from anybody, they thought that there was a flow in the process. But it's just like when you apply for a job, you go, you apply for a particular position, you may not hear back. So unfortunately, you may not have heard back, because you were not selected as one of the folks that was going to be interviewed on the 24th of September, and that's what's causing the confusion. And in the meantime, some of us were more proactive in calling in 17 of the candidates, and there might have been an impression that that particular candidate was going to be selected, which wasn't the case. It was just to get to know the candidate, so that a selection could be made, but that was done, that was done individually. I personally didn't call anybody. I did that on purpose. I kind of looked through the list, and the person that I was looking for was someone that, you know, had a track record in terms of involvement, and someone that I've known that I felt that would make a good fit for the community. If, you know, I did see a lot of candidates that have a lot of potential, they want to get involved, it's, you know, they're new to the town, which we want to cultivate in regards to getting people more involved. The point that I'm making here is, is that I think that there was an issue with communication. The instructions couldn't have been any clearer. If you look at those instructions, the instructions were clear, and I'm not going to flaw the administration in regards to how the process came about. That's just, that's just my perspective. So I apologize that, you know, one of our applicants, perhaps more, felt disenfranchised, but I felt that the process was handled appropriately. Thank you again for all the quality-of-life issues that were brought up to our attention. It's really productive when we hear from members of our community. Deputy Mayor Rodriguez, we're building this, a lot of these initiatives around quality-of-life issues, security, safety and security is very important, wellness. So I'm looking forward to continuing the work that we're accomplishing with him, so it's terrific to see him so proactive. Councilwoman Castellino, congratulations again, and look forward to working with you. You know, would it reach me, and vice versa, I bother you sometimes with issues as well, so congratulations, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you again.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. Thank you all for coming out this evening. I know a lot of the violations, basically, that were brought up by Mrs. Fiesod were handled through a meeting with her just now. I know she's gone for the evening, but I also wanted to say that the council, about a month or so ago, approved H2M planners to review all four of those corners, so that is something that we would present to the public, and she can certainly, you know, weigh in at that time. Hopefully, these quality-of-life issues are straightened out by then. This is more of a planning issue on the, on the four quadrants on that, at that corner. Mr. Hodson, I'm sorry I did not receive your email, but respectfully, I did, you know, thank you for sending in your resume. It would be redundant, everything we said, the process was laid out, and I do know that letters, I made sure really with the clerk, that letters would go out to all the candidates that submitted a resume, to let them know where they stood.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I see one thing, Council President, just, I see Margot's in, Margot's here. One of the things that we have to mention, October 15th, the pedestrian safety, if you would like to talk about it, but it is October 15th at the Turnoff Cafeteria. Margot's on the committee. Reminded me that that should have been an announcement that we set at the beginning of the meeting.
If I may touch base, I'm going to thank you, Councilwoman, with the kind of agenda tonight. Yes, please, that, remember, October 15th is our scheduled pedestrian safety and traffic meeting to be held at Turnoff Cafeteria at West Orange High School. It's going to be a great presentation. Professor Charles Brown of the Brockish University School of Public Policy and Planning will be making a presentation on the stats and the study they've been doing, also to bring people in on ad hoc meetings, to sit people down, to pick your brains, find out what you think are areas that we need to address with our pedestrian safety and traffic throughout the entire township, not just Pleasant Valley Way, to work and develop our safe routes to school, which Lori Caffney from the council PTAs is working on. And it's a really exciting thing, there are a lot of things that are going to happen, and also based upon this, what's grown out of this now is that we will have 18 co-op students from the Brockish University School of Public Policy and Planning in our township for four months, working with our different departments and working on redeveloping our complete streets. It's an exciting thing. This is something that would have cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we're getting it for nothing, because they're really excited about the Township of West Orange. So it's seven, it starts at 7:30 at night, at the, I mean, 7:00 o'clock at the Turnoff Cafeteria. We hope to see you there. There are flyers going out throughout the schools, it's on Facebook. If you have questions, you can contact Councilwoman Susan McCartney at her council email, you can contact me at my councilme email, and you can contact Ms. Roz Moskowitz at her email that's listed on the flyer. And thank you for reminding me, Councilwoman, I appreciate that. Madam Clerk, move along to the consent agenda?
Okay. Approval of meeting minutes, public meeting, September 8th, 2015. Consent. Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent. Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being called this evening?
Excuse me, I need to abstain on the bills list and the minutes of the last meeting.
The bills list and what?
The minutes of the last meeting, September 8th.
Okay.
Okay.
So, the records show that Councilwoman Castellino was abstaining from those two portions of the agenda tonight. Councilwoman Castellino, are you pulling or have any questions on the resolutions tonight?
No, thank you, I am fine. I spent much-needed time with Mr. Gross and Mr. Sayers.
Thank you. Councilman Krokowiac?
Nothing, no questions, no resolution to pull tonight, permit please.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Cirillo?
No resolutions.
Councilwoman McCartney?
I do not have any. My questions are answered, thank you.
And I have, I have no questions or pulling any resolutions this evening. So, Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
Ordinances on second and final reading.
Okay. 2463-15, bond ordinance authorizing renovations to the public library in and for the Township of West Orange in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $130,000 therefor and authorizing the issuance of $123,500 bonds or notes to finance part of the costs thereof. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Krokowiac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes. Is there anyone here tonight from the general public wishing to be heard on ordinance 2463-15? Seeing none, I close public comment. I open the floor to my council colleagues. Were any questions on 2463-15? Yes, Councilman?
I would just like to make sure that it was described so that people know what we're voting on. This is basically to pay for part of the expenses of cleaning up the problem we had at the, with the library facade, and we're going to issue debt to pay for part of the expenses and may have additional expenses coming down the line. Did I capture that well, Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Okay.
No, thank you, Councilman. Good point. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2463-15?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Krokowiac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Ordinances on first reading, ordinance 2464-15, and ordinance amending Chapter 25, Sections 8.4, 9.9, 9.10, and 11.10, and Chapter 32, Section 3 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, revisions of various zoning ordinances. Is there a motion to approve on first reading?
So moved.
I'll second. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Krokowiac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Ordinance 2465-15, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic Subsection 7-10.1, Stopping or Standing Prohibited During Certain Hours on Certain Streets of the, sorry, of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange. Is there a motion to approve on first reading?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Krokowiac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Ordinance 2466-15, and ordinance amending Chapter 5, Sections 32.1, 32.3, 32.7, 32.8, 32.9, 32.10, 32.11, and 32.12 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, Police Requested Towing and Storage Services. Is there a motion to approve on first reading?
So moved.
Second. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Krokowiac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
There's no ABC hearing this evening?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we close, just like to remind our residents about all the great things happening this weekend. The Thomas, the Friends of Edison, the Muckers Bowl on Saturday from 5 to 9. Also, the mountaintop fundraiser for the hockey program, the West Orange Old Stores against the mayor's team, please come out. It's $10 per person, it's a great thing, great billing program. Also, remember, the great thing on Sunday is our Community Health and Wellness Fair. A lot of vendors, a lot of information, a lot of helpful things to, for you, for your health and for your family's health, and we hope you turn out. These are great events that we give to the community, and the community members volunteer their time. So, please come out, show your support, show your interest, and like I said, always feel free to contact us at our emails, and please come to council meetings and be part of the democratic process. I hope to see you on our next meeting on October 13th. Madam Clerk, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried.
Good night, West Orange, have a great evening.
Happy birthday, October 13th.